As usual, we'll start with announcements and a review of the agenda, followed by a public comment period, and then the town managers' report. Within that, we may talk about the Select Board's agenda schedule. We will discuss and potentially approve a one-day beer and wine license for the Historical Society for a wedding ceremony on Thursday, February 20th. We will have an update on our schedule for the next three months, an update on policies on the website, and potentially an update on the fiscal '21 budget. Then at 7:15, we will be meeting together with the Community Preservation Committee to kick off the first of what I anticipate will be many conversations around CPA, the future, and participation and such. Under Other Business, we will have a discussion of our process to fill a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Trust. We then have our ongoing issues list, A through I, an opportunity for liaison reports, and a set of minutes to approve. Does anyone have any announcements? Yeah, Becky?
So today was the first day that one could sign up to run for office, for a local office in the Town of Groton, and I just want to announce that I signed the paperwork to run for reelection as a Select Board member in May.
Good. Any other announcements? All right, any public comment? Oh my goodness, everyone saving things. All right, Mark, you'll turn it over to you.
I'm going to buzz through my town manager's report so we can get right to the CPA discussion. I would respectfully request that the board consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for the Historical Society for a wedding ceremony to be held on Thursday, February 20th, 2020, 2020, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Botwell House, 172 Main Street.
Someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I move that we approve a one-day beer and wine license for the Historical Society for Thursday, February 20th, 2020, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Botwell House.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
At the last meeting, Becky asked that I include an update to the three-month meeting schedule each week, so I've updated it. Obviously, we've already posted tonight's meeting. Next week, we hope to get the housing production plan this week. We'll put it on the agenda for next week. We'll be meeting in joint session with the Park Commission as well to fill a vacancy on the Park Commission. They're doing their interview this Wednesday night, and then they'll come in with a recommendation to the board, and you'll have a chance to interview the candidate. I believe we've received only one interested applicant thus far for that vacancy. And then you see I've tried to update the rest of the schedule to address the issues that we're talking about, and I will continue to update this each week. Did anybody see anything on that schedule of any concern? Are they comfortable with that? Is that good?
I'm just, I'm just, we just need to decide before too long what we're going to do on March 30th.
Yeah.
Are we going to meet, aren't we going to?
Oh, yeah, yep. That's still a discussion point.
I still think we should.
Work session.
We should use that as a work session.
Yes, Bud?
February?
Yeah, that's, I'm just doing the regularly scheduled meeting. They are, I'll talk about Saturday's meeting under my FY '21 budget update.
Is that what every meeting has?
Yeah, no, no, this is just in Monday nights, not the special ones. Okay, we can do that. But anyway, this is the schedule, and I'll continue to update it every week in my packet. I want to, I want to thank Mike Bouchard a lot because he took something on for me and for the board, which I thought was a yeoman's task. And what the board had asked for is that we put our policies that you just recently adopted on the town website for access to it. So up here on the screen, you see the town's website. To get to our policies, you go into Government, and then you go into Bylaws and Charter, and then hopefully that will pop up. And then you see miscellaneous documents. You click on that, and then you see the Select Board policies. They're broken down by employee policies, human resource policies, public policy, and Select Board policies. And if you're interested in a particular policy, you click on it, and there it is for you. So anybody can go on the website and see any Select Board policy that they're interested in and learning. This happens to be the social media policy. We have the number of the policy and the date of its last revision, so people will know that they're up to date. Mike did all of this for me, and I can't thank him enough for doing it. So it's done, it's there, it's ready to go. So I hope the board appreciates that effort.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And relay the thanks to all who worked on that.
And then finally, we have an FY, and part of my town manager's report is the FY '21 budget update that Bud was just referring to. So this Saturday, beginning at 8:30 in this room, we will be meeting in joint session with the Finance Committee, and the purpose of that meeting is to really look at the FY ' '21 budget in great detail, and it's also to look at other aspects that are going to affect the budget. In particular, the five-year projection that shows a $3.6 million deficit over the next five years, and potential ways to address that particular deficit, and also the impact that the Florence Roach Elementary School building project will have on that as well. So we're going to be spending a lot of time Saturday reviewing those options, looking at the numbers, really digging into the impact of what FY '21 and future years look like. So it's a very important meeting for the Select Board and the Finance Committee to really roll up their sleeves and look at that. And we're going to put a lot of things on the table for consideration because there is a lot to consider, some of the impacts that we're going to be facing, or some of the issues we're going to be facing in the next several years. But I do have a couple of good news, good news to report on the FY.
Can I just jump in, Mark? So my understanding, and I wanted you to correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep.
Is that that meeting would be when, if we had questions about why this was left in or that was taken out, that's kind of the appropriate time?
Absolutely.
To churn through all those kinds of things.
Yes, absolutely. But I do have a couple of good updates to give the board on the budget. The first one is you all went to, some of you went to the Neshoba Tech breakfast. I had level funded the budget for the Shobha Tech next year at 7:28. Our actual assessment is coming in at 6:88. So there's a $40,000 reduction in the budget following the guidance. Half of that reduction would go to the school, and half of that reduction would come to the town. The reason for that is that is a line item that's not a municipal operation, it's an assessment. So it makes sense to split any savings there with the school district.
The school district, the Groton Dunstable.
Groton Dunstable Regional School District, thank you. And then the second issue of good news is we have tentative approval, subject to final approval by the board, on the health insurance rates for next year. We carried a 10% increase in the various rates. It's coming in more in the 6.5% range. Those savings, we're running those numbers, I'll have those for you Saturday. Those savings are 100% of municipal government because that's our shifting things around. And that'll give the Finance Committee and the Select Board the option to restore some of the things that I had recommended be taken out of the budget as part of the balanced budget for next year. So more good news with regards to that budget, and we'll have the exact numbers for you Saturday morning. Is there anything else, Bud, that I should update online?
I think the school should potentially show up at the, I'll invite, probably.
Good.
Because I think that's important.
I think it is to have that, to have that discussion, especially if we're going to be looking at the long-term financial impacts. Hopefully, the school will be represented at that, at least for discussion purposes anyway. So all good news with regard so far to the, well, a couple of pieces of good news. The overall five-year projection of a $3.6 million deficit is not good news, but we do have some good news going into, going into the FY '21. Another thing I would like to talk about, and while the Community Preservation Committee is here, and I had a conversation with Mary Jennings last week, and there was some confusion on the sprinkler system bid process, that I think there was some confusion that I'd like to clear up right now. The reason we don't have an exact number for you is when we go out to bid on a project, we have to have, if there's not an appropriation, we have to have the bids due within 30 days of a potential appropriation date. So town meeting is April 27th. If I go out to bid now and have a number, unless the contractor agrees to hold his prices for that amount of time, I lose that. So we have to have the bid opening within 30 days of the appropriation date, and we make the bid subject to the appropriation of the town meeting if we need additional funds. That's why it's open-ended. Now, we have about $214,000 or $220,000 left?
We have $217,000. Can you just grab the microphone? I'm sorry.
Thank, I'm sorry, Mary, to put you on the spot.
Yes, we have $217,000 left in the $250,000 grant that we have for fire protection.
Okay, so there's, that $217,000 sitting there, we're going to go out to bid, and if the bids come in $217,000 or under, we'll do a little dance party. Bruce and I have already planned it out. And if, if it's greater than 217, then we'll need to approach the Community Preservation Committee for those additional funds, if you're so inclined to recommend at the town meeting. So what I would ask you to do is similar to what we did at the town meeting last fall when we'd gone out to bid, is have a placeholder position, if you're so inclined to support that, for the town meeting, so that when the bids come in, we'll be able to, if we, if we want to, fund that particular. Does that make sense?
What you're saying makes sense. What bucket would it come out of?
It's up to the Community Preservation Committee to do that.
So based on the current applications that'll be paid to CPC for the funding round that's currently underway, if you were to fund everything, would you be leaving money aside in the event that additional funds would need to be allocated for that?
Somebody take the microphone if you're going to address that, please. Oh, you can just hit there, that's even better. You're going to be coming up there in a minute anyway.
So we have, we have what they call discussionary, but we have a fund set aside that's unallocated. And I think what we will, we'll have to discuss a little bit what, how much we set aside, probably get some idea of how much we need to keep in reserves. I think a lot, we're getting additional funding this year because the state has distributed a, something from their excess funds, so we may have more of a cushion than we expected. We tend to be very conservative in our, in our financial planning. Bruce keeps very close track of the numbers. So we'll have probably a clearer idea once we, as, as time goes on, how much, how much we actually have.
Typically, what do you keep in a reserve fund?
How much do you guess, Bruce?
We don't, as a general policy, keep some minimum amount in the, in the different bins. Looking at it bin by bin, of course, we have a lot of money sitting in the community housing bin because we haven't had any projects that came forward in that category. There's a half a million dollars or more sitting in that bin right now. Traditionally, the open space and recreation bin has essentially a zero-dollar balance because we essentially clean that or clear that to pay the Surrenden Farm debt service. And by doing that, we leave as much money as possible in the unallocated reserve bin, which can be used for projects that qualify under all four of the categories that the CPA allows spending. And that gives the CPC the maximum flexibility in recommending projects to town meeting that are the best projects, no matter what category they come out of.
But, but to qualify for the sprinklers, wouldn't that have to come out of Historic Preservation or not?
It can come out of Historic Preservation, and it can also come out of the unallocated reserve bin. And I think there's $150,000 sitting in the historic bin right now.
170, I think, is the number that.
Excuse me?
I think the balance as of December 31st was 170.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a pretty good source of funds in the historic bin.
And you don't have applications in the historic, that qualify from the historic bin that would exceed the amount that you have in there? So technically, that could be a reserve for any overage in the bid?
Yeah, we have an application to put some sliding doors in the library, the pocket doors.
I know, $75,000.
Potential application.
But that's like a fairly moderate amount, wasn't it?
It's under $10,000.
Under $10,000, right.
Okay.
So we think we do have funds there.
So we have some flexibility, and, and as, on the 20th of February, the final, final draft of the full proposals will due, and we'll have a better indication of what the requests are in terms of funding, and we'll be able to come up with a firmer budget at that time.
Yeah, right, we're still in the process, and yeah, as the process goes through by town meeting, we'll have a very clear idea of what proposals are approvable and what ones we're going to approve to have go forward to town meeting.
I mean, just the reason I ask is, as Mark had explained, the short window of the 30-day life of the opening of the bid.
Right.
In that if it runs in excess of that, how you will fund it if you were to fund it.
Yeah, we'll discuss that at our next meeting.
Right.
How we want to handle that.
So this is a perfect segue into the 7:15 agenda item, which is. So Allison, I don't know how you want to, how you want to do this, but I've given a bunch of information to the board. Could you give me maybe five or 10 minutes to go through that, to explain it? I think that would be helpful, and then we can get into the discussion. This, the, just so everybody's understanding, this is something that the board had talked about, put on as part of their goals to review it. This is, I'm going to imagine, the first of many discussions. There's no decision to be made. It's just, the purpose of tonight is to get information out on the table, and then the board and the CPC and the community can decide. The first thing is if we're going to ever do anything with the CPC, or the CPA, I should say, it's, if we want to reduce it, change it, do whatever, it's a two-step process where you have to go to town meeting first, and then you have to go to the ballot. So in 2004, this town voted at town meeting to enter the CPA, and then at the governor's election that year, the state election in November, the town voted over, you know, by over 200 votes to support being in the CPA back in 2004. That's how it worked. Is that okay? I thought, Allison asked, and I thought it was a good idea to just put some information in your packet, which I put in, which explains how the community preservation works, how the thing is made up. So I'm sure you've all had a chance to review this. I'm not going to go through that, I think we all understand that. The one thing that I did want to talk about, I prepared a memorandum for you, and I provided a copy of the memorandum to the Community Preservation Committee so that they had it in advance as well. And if anybody wants to see this, it is posted online as part of the Select Board's packet. So what I did was, I said, okay, let's take a look at the history of the CPA since 2015, and I've given you four spreadsheets. The first spreadsheet shows what the town collected and spent on the CPA from 2015 through 2019 at the three percentage, 3% surcharge, including the state match, and then what the income would have looked like if it had been 1%. And the key there with that is you don't get rounds two and three matches, and I'll show you on the spreadsheet how that, how that happened. The second spreadsheet shows if you take out the Surrenden Farm debt from the calculation, what would be left over in the various buckets in the unallocated, and what projects were approved in '15, and whether or not a 1% surcharge would have approved that. Now, the important thing to point out there is those were projects that were presented that the CPA could vote on because there was 3%. Had the allocation been only 1% or 2%, you may not even have considered those projects. So I don't want to think it's a done deal that those projects would have been done, but as a basis of a, of a review to see what had happened, I thought it was a good comparison. Then the third spreadsheet shows the same information, but what it would have been at 2%, and then take out Surrenden Farm and what that would have been. So we'll go, we'll go through that. But then there've been a couple of other questions that were asked of me, and I've been asked whether, what the impact would be if the town lowered the percent to 2 or 1. Based on the 219 surcharge, the town collected approximately $756,000 in CPA funds. Now, I know there's some extra money that may have come in with the state match that I didn't have at the time I put this together, but it's a good ballpark.
It is.
$756,000. If you were to lower it to 2%, that would have reduced the town collection from 756 to 252. And if it was 1%, it would have lowered it from 7, it would have lowered it by 504,000 to 252. Does that make sense? 2%, we would have collected 504,000; 1%, we would have collected 252,000. Is that clear?
No.
No, because I, what I do here is, I said it reduces the amount by 252. So for those of you who don't understand how the surcharge works, the way, I took the average tax bill. The average home value in Groton is $492,000. The way the surcharge works is there's a $100,000 abatement right off the value to start, so that lowers it to 392. You multiply it by the tax rate, divide it by 1,000, and then take 3% of the remaining tax bill. The average homeowner in, a home valued in $492,000 in fiscal year 9, fiscal year '20, paid $204.39 in the surcharge for the CPA. That, all that collection led to $756,000 overall.
The 7.6 is generated by the taxpayers, or is the?
Nope, that's what the Town of Groton taxpayers paid.
Just want to be clear.
The state match last year, Bruce put us over a million dollars, I believe, in CPA funds in FY '20.
Yeah, that's.
You'll see that on my next spreadsheet. So then I said, okay, people need to understand that the CPA is a surcharge on the tax bill, it is not part of the Proposition 2.5 levy. So if the surcharge went away, that money would go away, and it's not there. But if the town wanted to reallocate that money somehow, you'd have to increase the tax levy by that amount. And what ends up happening is, say we, say we reduce it by 1%, which frees up $252,000 the taxpayers were paying before. That would add 13 cents to the tax bill, and the average ta, tax rate and the average tax bill would go up 63.96, 504,026 cents, or 127.92, and then the full 756 would translate into 39 cents, which would add $191 to the average tax bill. So the one thing that I looked at, and Bud and I had a conversation about this, and I couldn't wrap my head around it, but thank God for our town accountant, I understand it now, the $204 on the average tax bill to 3% surcharge would only be $191 if you were to override 2.5. And you look at that, you say, well, wait a minute, why? Because the CPA surcharge is only on real property. The overall tax bill takes into consideration personal property as well, which the CPA doesn't. That's why it's different. Does that make sense to everybody? Because it took, it took me forever to figure that out, and I'm not that smart, so. But anyway, so I thought that was good information. And then I was also asked, well, if we had $252,000 in excluded debt, what would that allow us to borrow? And so based on 20 years at 4%, $252,000 would pay off debt service over 20 years at 3.1 million, 504 would pay 6.5, and 756 would cover 9.6 million. Does all that make sense?
You mean, the capacity to borrow, to use the same amount of money as?
Excluded debt.
As we're now paying to the CPA if we were to apply that as debt service?
You'd be able to borrow 9.6, you'd have a project valued at 9.6 million, and it would be the, it would be 756,000 would be the debt service payment. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think it's clear, Bud. What's that? What's that?
I think another thing we talked about was the fact of this debt, but there's also, one of the reasons we're talking about this, which we're going to get into, is because there's an operational side of this, which says, if you put this as an override without going after debt, this will support whatever the number is.
Yeah, that's, that's the first thing.
And it gets 2.5% going forward. So that's the other piece of this puzzle.
That's correct. And then I was also asked, if you look at the last 10 years of capital budgets, was there anything in the capital budget that was taken out of the capital budget because the CPA was able to fund it? And the answer to that question is, there's nothing in my capital budget that I prepared for the last 11 years that would have, that was replaced by CPA project. Those CPA projects went directly to the CPC and never touched our capital budget. I think that's an important aspect as well. So I hope that's good information. Now, I know these spreadsheets are hard to see, and I'm sorry they're, they're so small, but what I did is I, if you look at this first year, 2015, I'm not going to go through every year, but if you look at 2015, we collected in the local surcharge $604,000. We got three matches of state funding, three rounds of state funding, which totaled 40%. So the total amount that was being able to spend on CPA projects that year was $802,000 plus whatever was in the reserves going into 2015. Keep that in mind. If it had been 1% at that time, we would have collected $201,000 in the surcharge, and we only would have received the round one match, which would have been 32%. Three rounds gave us an extra 8% of money on top of the 604. At 1%, we only got one round at 32%, so we would have had $266,000 under that. And then I've given you a breakdown of the various projects. So that year, the CPC, the CPA supported $1.92 million worth of projects, and that includes the Surrenden Farm debt. So I thought that was an interesting analysis, and then I did it for '16, '17, '18, and '19. So that's the first spreadsheet. The second spreadsheet that I talked about shows what would have happened had you taken out Surrenden Farm, what would have been in those buckets each, each year? So in '15, there would have been $609,000 to spend on other projects, and I think this shows the point that Bruce said, that the first thing that they always do with Surrenden Farm is they zero out the open space bucket. So you don't see any money in the open space bucket because that all went towards Surrenden Farm. So that would have been $609,000 of available money. Had you been at 1%, you wouldn't have been able to do any of the projects that the CPA supported because the 1%, this would have been the deficit in each one of those accounts at 1%. And then I carry that through, through all the years. And so 1%, you would have been able to cover, you wouldn't have been able to even cover Surrenden Farm at 1%. And you would have had these deficits in those other accounts. And then I show you on this next chart here what the 2% number is. 2% would have been $403,000. The first round match of 32% would have been 129, and then so on and so forth across the, the schedule. And then you see, if you take 2%, 2%, it, the first year, who knows what would have been in that in previous years, but you could have supported all the other projects that the CPA supported in, in future years at 2%. So you wouldn't have lost anything there. And the reason you see deficits of 98,000, 78,000, and 90,000 here, the reason you'd be able to do is because the unallocated reserve would have had enough money to cover what you took out of the historic bucket. Does that make sense? I know it's a lot of information, and.
Wait, there's two parts of that chart. What's the difference between the top half and the bottom half?
This is what was funded, taking out Surrenden Farm.
Right.
This is how much money was spent on other projects in each of those years.
Okay.
609,000, 415, and so on and so forth. At the, at the, at the 2% number, this is what, this says 1.5, that's a typo, that should say 2%. At the 2% number, this is what was left over in those buckets that could have been spent on those projects, and you would have had enough money to fund all the other projects.
And, and the ones that showed deficits could have been funded by?
Through the unallocated.
From the unallocated.
Yeah, because this 78, you had 187 on unallocated, and this 90, you had 106 on unallocated. And then what I showed you here, this is what we talked about, that Bruce talked about before, that Josh asked a question. As of 12/31/19, going into fiscal year '20, these are the balances in the various reserves. You have 16,000 in the open space reserve, 170 historic resources, 536 in community housing, and 75 in the unallocated. So there's 798,000 in those various accounts total for the CPA. This, right, this 536 for community housing can only be spent on affordable housing projects. So take that 536 out, and you're down to around $250,000 in available for some of the projects that they have before them. The only thing that'll come out of that community housing is the community, is the affordable housing coordinator, that they pay the cost for that position there.
Well, as we look to FY 2021, we will take these and also add the projected revenues for the coming fiscal year as part of that budget.
That's right. So they would, that's, I was going to get to that. So starting, you know, next year, you'll be collecting that 756 plus whatever the growth is. The estimated tax rate for next year is 1799, so you're automatically going to see more, the 3% surcharge is going to be, is going to be higher, and then you have the state, apparently now, because of whatever's happening at the registry, is collecting more money, so there'd be more match money coming into the town as well in those three rounds. So any question, does that make sense? I know there was a lot of information. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, I will stop talking now and drink my water and sit back.
I do have one question.
Please.
So in your, all of these spreadsheets, the percentage of money that we've gotten from the state, if I'm reading this correctly, in FY '15 was 40.5%?
Correct.
In FY '16 was 29.05%?
That's the match, yep.
In FY '17, it was 37.81%?
Yep.
And 2018, 28.08%? And 2019, 39.18%?
It's starting, as Bruce said, they, they had extra money in '19, so, and then '20's going to be even more, I think, Bruce.
Right.
So I just want to point that out because, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but what was an early projection that was widely publicized that we, was that we were only going to get 17%? And since obviously the lowest we had here was 28.08%.
Correct.
Obviously, 17% was way off the mark.
I can speak to that if you want.
Before, can I make one, I want to call, call our meeting to order, just to make it formal. Thanks.
And, and you know, why don't you introduce the members, just so we all know?[1763.51]
Carolyn Perkins, Anna Elliott, Bob DeGroot, and, well, Richard Hewitt.
Thank you. Thanks, by the way, thank you for inviting us. We're looking forward to these conversations. I personally think the CPA has been a phenomenal asset to the town, has been a, has provided enormous return on our investments from a very practical point of view. And I think it's great that this will give a chance for the public to understand more clearly where our funding comes from, where we put it, what the town values. Almost everything that we, comes out of the CPC funding goes to things that the town has wanted and expressed a desire for in their master plan and the various plans. And I think it has been a, been extremely successful. Bruce has done an extremely fantastic job in keeping very close track on the funds, and that's always one of the key elements in anything, is having credibility and trust that the numbers are right and solid. And I think that's kind of what our reputation is based on, we try to be as clear and upfront as we possibly can. And we've got a fantastic team working on this, and so we're looking forward to working with you guys. I think it's, I think this is a really wonderful thing for the town to look into.
It's great, and I want to certainly, you know, echo that in terms of the benefit we've seen with the state match and things. It's a tremendous program, and we are very much appreciative of all the hours that the CPC members have put in. It's no small task. You know, this is a conversation really about any number of things as we move forward in terms of budgeting and, and options and alternatives and priorities, and, you know, I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about having citizens who really understand, you know, what, what things have been to date and what they can be going forward and, you know, are making decisions that way.
Yeah, I, and my own sense is that, you know, one of the things that makes Groton such an appealing place, the quality of life in it, are all of these sometimes intangible things, the historic resources, the open space, all these, the recreational facilities. I think that adds tremendous value, makes the town appealing to people who want to bring their kids here. I know the school, the school funding is one of the great concerns, this upcoming possible expense, and I realize that that's one question of how do we allocate our resources? And I think it's important to keep in mind that, yes, education is critical for them, but it's why do we educate? What are we here for? What does the town exist for? Why do families move here? I think the CPA helps, the funding that the town puts into that helps support those kind of often invisible aspects of quality of life in this town and make it such a unique place.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to answer that 17% question that came up. There's two reasons why that is a well-publicized number. It is the first round match number that comes out of DOR. DOR publishes, that's the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue publishes that widely because all CPAs will get at least 17%, which is the first round match. Groton is a 3% town, so we're eligible to the, for the second and third rounds, which makes that closer to the 25% number. The reason why DOR doesn't publicize the 25% number is because not all towns are going to get that, and they would be somewhat disappointed to, to realize that they're not going to get that published number from DOR. The second reason is, DOR is also quite conservative about the number that they do publish because people make plans for spending in terms of what numbers are coming out of DOR.
DOR is very conservative in everything they do. Right, bud?
Which isn't necessarily a bad...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sending me to...
Yeah, and, and, and the consequence of being conservative in these projections means that the numbers, the, the money becomes available in the following fiscal year. In other words, the money doesn't go away because you underestimated the budget, it just carries over to the following year, which is, nothing wrong with that.
And I think one of the great things about CPA funding is that the town controls the use of the funds, and that was a great concern when the act first got passed, was the concern that somehow the, the funds that go from the Registry of Deeds would get raided by other parts of the government, and the fact is, they have held, just to their word, and that fund, now there are over 170 towns on board, and so I think we can say with reasonable, you know, high odds, that it's not going to be threatened in the immediate future because so many towns are benefiting, including Boston and Lowell. And so there's tremendous support for this act, and I think that's why it's going to continue in the future. The 3% funding has provided, I think, a great additional cushion that we wouldn't have gotten if we'd gone with the 2% or the 1%. The funding, they changed the Registry of Deeds fees, I think it was $25, now it's going up to 50. They're trying to get to a minimum 40% matching funds. That's a nice jump. It's not as good as the 100% when we started, which we have for three or four years, but as more towns came on board, obviously was, the pie got smaller. But the Registry of Deeds and this legislature realized, this act has had tremendous, been a tremendous boom for many places, and I think that's why there's tremendous support for it, and it's something to keep in mind going forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, you just need to grab the microphone. Please.
Just a, a comment on, yes, we were able to fund the ones that got approved, but there were a number of projects in the last few years that we haven't funded, who were, who were very valuable projects. There was a track at the school we would've liked to have funded, there was a project at the library we would've liked to have funded, that didn't get funded because there were insufficient funds over the last few years to meet all the needs in all the projects. I just don't want that to get lost in this conversation.
And another additional thing on top of that, the community, the Conservation Commission, with the, the funds that we've been spending, protect open land has been one of the great driving forces that provided support for it, and the ConsCom has been very generous in backing off on some of their requests, but the town, I think the ConsCom likes to have at least a $750,000 cushion to, to provide resource if a, if a, if an option, or an opportunity pops up, and I think that's something that we have to keep in mind, actually one of the, the open space preservation, one of the critical pieces of support for it. Serrendan Farm was a huge part of that, and that was a $5 million investment of the part of the town, but it's protected like 360 acres, I believe, of land. It was a team effort between our, between the town, the Groton School, and so on, I think that was a great example of collaboration and community support. Thank you.
When does that, and I don't know who's the best person to answer that, when does Serrendan Farm, when is the final payment?
We have a payment and a half left. You have a $470,000 or $480,000 debt service payment in FY 21, and you have a half payment in FY 22 of approximately $250,000, I believe, Bruce?
That's correct.
So it pays off in FY 22, and that goes away.
Other questions, comments, thoughts, both, both boards?
I've got a bunch.
Okay.
So you might wonder how this all came about, that this ended up in the Select Board's goals, and why we're talking about this. This is part of a puzzle piece, a large puzzle, that is going to be unfolded and laid out on the table over the course of the next month to the taxpayers of the town of Groton. As Mark had pointed out in his Town Managers Report, we're meeting on Saturday with the Finance Committee, and we have somewhere between a 3.2 and a 3.6 million dollar five-year shortfall in budgeting. And we're not talking about capital budget, all right? We're just talking about general budget from where we stand today. And Bud, myself, and Mark have been meeting with the Finance Team in order to put together a presentation for Saturday, which will be coming forward, which will include a potential override which may last for five or six years. That will be laid out in the future, very near future, and will be discussed. In addition to that, we have a Florence Roach school replacement, which is squarely on the back of the taxpayers of the town of Groton and not shared through the two towns that are in the district due to the ownership of the building and due to the student population all being from the town of Groton. Jump in anytime, I miss something.
You're saying everything just right.
That project, we thought initially was going to cost the taxpayers maybe $30 million after state reimbursement, then 35, then 40, then 50 million. Last week, it jumped up to $60 million. So, that's a debt exclusion that will need to be brought forward in fiscal '22, and that's a huge amount of money that's required by the taxpayers. You couple that with a potential five- or six-year shortfall, structural override of two and a half that would need to be paid by the taxpayers, and collectively, all of these numbers are going to aggregate and, and add to people's bases regardless of what their assessments are and what they have to pay. In addition to that, we have a water treatment plant that is going to have to be paid for by the ratepayers and potentially subsidized, and that's up for discussion, by the taxpayers. We also have an unfunded mandate coming down from the state called a MS4 permit, I believe?
Yep.
And that's a wastewater treatment system that has to be put in for the town in order to handle and manage our wastewater.
Stormwater.
Not wastewater, let's not go down wastewater. That's not available. Stormwater treatment. So collectively, we have all of these surtaxes, potential overrides, debt exclusions, and we've calculated what the numbers may be in giving year. So, from the perspective of a Select Board and a Finance Committee, if we don't take a look at what the impacts of the CPA tax is at 3%, and it's done, I've gone through this list, and I know these projects really well, and I was personally one of the biggest advocates moving forward for this back in 2004, and I still am, but the big question we have to answer as taxpayers and elected officials is, what's in the best interest of the taxpayers at large? Now, I'll never advocate for the elimination of the CPA, okay? That just isn't going to happen. But we do squarely need to look and see whether we continue to fund it at 3% or reduce that to 2%. Now, Mark's illustrations in his spreadsheet shows that once the Serrendan Farm debt expires, that if there are big-ticket projects such as the Serrendan Farm project, or if Prescott School came forward, or if another thing came forward, and we were to bring this number down, the funds might not be available through the CPC. And if they're not available through the CPC, that doesn't mean these projects can't happen. Right now, a CPA project that is brought forward to your board that you lend support for has to go to town meeting, and it passes by 50.1% vote, and it's funded, is that correct?
Unless they incur debt, then it's a two-thirds.
Unless you incur debt. Like Serrendan Farm's case, which had to go to the ballot and required, a two-thirds vote at town.
At town meeting, that was it?
And then it didn't go to the ballot?
No, because it wasn't a debt exclusion, it was paid for through CPA.
So let's, let's follow through with the logic I'm using here. If a big project comes forward and we were to lower the number of the CPA or the CPC, the percentage, whether it be to 2%, 1%, 1 and a half percent, whatever the number is, that's going to take a vote at town meeting, and that's going to take a vote at the ballot box of the voters in order to make that happen in the first place. But if a large-scale project came forward and the number was reduced, and the money was not within the bins in order to fund it, or bond it, or whatever the case may be, then it can come forward still to town meeting, but through a different, different mechanism. It could come through as a debt exclusion vote, the same way that when Gibbet Hill came forward many years ago, that wasn't funded through the CPC, but yet we funded that through a debt exclusion, and it was highly successful. So, by laying out to the taxpayers and the voters what the options are on the table to potentially soften the blow of some large-scale expenditures that are coming forward, we only have so much pie shell in order to make this pie, so to speak. It comes to food again, Mark, I'm sorry.
Josh, I want to be you if we didn't talk about food.
But I think the point being is, if this is in order to have this discussion, to have the discussion with the Finance Committee about what we're looking at for deficits moving forward, and then be able to explain to the taxpayers, well, here's some options, and it's up to you at the end of the day how you want to vote. Good observation. I think one of the things that, one of the things that drought also drove the passage of the Act was something called Act 40B, which allows builders to come into the town and bypass local zoning. And I think one thing to keep in mind is, is this unallocated fund will increase, and I think that that, we've been spending so much of that on open space as it is with the Serrendan Farm, that might potentially become available towards use for, actually it's community housing, which is both affordable housing, but also there are many other ways that money can be spent. It tends to be done for affordable housing, but you can do handicapped improvement, you can do, make, I think apartments and houses and so on for in-laws, in-law apartments. I think there's a lot of various things you can do to improve the quality of housing in town. So affordable housing is the best-known part of it, but there are other ways it can be expended with town people, of course. I mean, one of the, the simple analysis is, analyses that we did, Mark, and help me here with this one. My understanding is, we collect on the average $492,000 home in the town of Groton, which is the average, about $206.
$204, yep.
So, moving it up to $210, just to make this simple math, at 3%, it's $210. If you brought it to 2%, it would be $140. If you brought it to 1%, it would be $70. That would be the number. Now, Mark's calculation, once you carry that forward as to what available capacities are, there's a tremendous amount of money that's available that could almost fund a $3.6 million five-year override by bringing it down to 1%. Wasn't that the analysis that we performed?
It's...
That, i- it's just something to lay out and put it on the table. But the thing I found interesting from the exercise that Mark did, and Bruce, I know you helped him with it to, to refine that number, that if you factor out the Serrendan Farm debt, and once that goes away, if you held the CPA tax at 2%, that all the projects that you've been funding outside of Serrendan Farms over the creation of this since 2004, I would believe, more or less would've been able to be funded at 2%. Was that the analysis, Mark?
Yes.
Josh? I, I just want to add another little part here that we've seen, and that's, some of these projects have an afterlife. They have to be maintained, and it doesn't appear that, that we're getting coordinated on whether or not the general funds have the money to maintain projects that get done which require maintenance. And as an example, it had to be done, but Batacuk Pond has brought a significant demand yearly, on and on and on. And so, it's necessary, I think, for these projects and these applications to address and make as visible as they can if there are after-project costs that the town is going to incur. Because it's just one bucket.
Right.
Anna, if you could grab the microphone.
Yeah, and I, I just have a concern about the quote, the whole debt question, and whether or not CPA funds could be used to reduce debt on, in kind of identifying what projects qualify for CPA funds that might help reduce debt as opposed to creating debt. And I know that the Serrendan Farms debt, that it did have to, we did incur debt in order to pay for the Serrendan Farms, whether we had to go to a ballot in order to approve that, that, that debt because, because it was CPA, do we have to go to a ballot or not? And those are, those are my concerns, is having a, a large application that might incur debt and how that gets, that, you know, how that gets...
The CPA, the Community Preservation Act allows communities to incur debt based on future income, future receipts of community preservation money. That's how you were able to do Serrendan Farm. Because you had whatever the money, you bonded $5 million, you paid it off over 15 years, $480,000 approximately a year. You knew you were going to be taking that in, and CPA funds at 3%, so you were allowed to incur that debt. The law specifically allows that.
I would just clarify that a little bit. The law, the law allows you to bond against the local surcharge.
That's what I'm saying.
But not against the state.
Let me correct, let me, yes, Bruce, I should've said that.
Against the surcharge.
So we were able to bond that, that, we were going to collect that 756 enough to pay that debt.
But I don't mention the question about whether or not that would have had to go to a ballot question as well.
It does not need to go to a ballot.
And that's the concern that I, that has been expressed to me about incurring debt that doesn't go to a ballot question, and whether, you know, setting priority, priorities on incurring debt that...
Well, if I, if I may, not every time we incur debt at town meeting do we go to a ballot. For example, we paid $1.1 million for a ladder truck, we paid for that within the levy limit. We did not, we've got a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and then the general tax revenues of the town covered that.
And the fire station was originally...
The fire station was originally within the levy, absolutely was, and that was a $6 million, $7 million project. That's right, thank you, Becky.
Right. But I think to Anna's point, it is a question of what different mechanisms we have or would have available to us, how they would change the approval process.
If you had to go to a ballot.
Right, and what impacts they would have. I mean, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, folks, but I don't think there are projects that really could only have been funded through CPA. I mean, these could've come forwards, Serrendan Farm could've been excluded debt, they could, you know, there's any number of different mechanisms that all come with pros and cons. Certainly, the state match is a huge benefit.
That's the, that's the benefit.
As long as we can all continue to agree that that's a priority and that we can afford to fund this in addition to any other things that we prioritize. Yeah.
I would just add, in, in round numbers, since the adoption of the Community Preservation Act, the town has received $4 million in reimbursement or matching funds from the state, and we've collected about $8 million from the local surcharge. So looking back, that's a, that's a 50% match. It was higher in the earlier years and, and, and lower in the later years. As we look forward, I think that 35% to 40% number is probably good right now. Depends on how many other towns adopt it and whether there's any other changes at the Registry of Deeds. adopt it and whether there's any other changes at the Registry of Deeds. Just looking at the surrender and farm debt service, somewhere around six million dollars, half of that. Or, excuse me, a third of that would have been paid for by the state match. So, that was two million dollars was saved on that one project. And so, I think the exercise going forward is looking at the needs of the town and figuring out which of those needs could be funded by the CPC or the Community Preservation Act. And it seemed to me that if you have an opportunity to fund something with CPA money or off the general budget, the first dollar you should spend is CPA money, because that's the forty percent match. You don't want to give that up unless there's no alternative. On the other hand, it's not desirable to collect more CPA surcharge revenue than you actually need to run the town in case you're just building up the bank accounts. If you have no particular future need for that, then it's probably better in the hands of the taxpayer.
Well, that's the point, Bruce, that's an excellent point, with the community housing bucket of five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars just sitting there.
Right.
Of taxpayer money. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to be working on it. That's one of our goals, is to figure out how to leverage that money.
Absolutely.
Yeah, could I?
That's a critical one.
So, I'm hoping that as we look forward and try to understand what the needs of the Community Preservation Act, we'll be reaching out to, I hope, the school district to show them how they can use these funds to do fields and perhaps other issues. Because a forty percent match is something really nice to use if you got it. It's a shame to lose it because you haven't thought about it.
Absolutely. Carolyn and Bud and Becky.
One other benefit that we have with the CPA money is that we can use it for grants. So, the Historic, Mass Historic Commission Recreation has used it, where you can commit CPA money as your fifty percent. So, if you're going for some of these grants where it's fifty percent the state pays for and you pay for the other fifty percent, if you have CPA funding for that, they accept that in terms of your ability to get that grant. So, that's another way that we leverage this money. And we have, I know that the Conservation Commission has used it, and I think, I believe, John, didn't you use it? Have you used? And other people have used it for the trails. So, that's a key part of this. I under, you know, when Durant first, kind of put, Senator Durant first did this, one of the things his goal was, was to provide funding for those things that really were the quality of life for towns that you couldn't fund out of the budget, the regular town budget. So, these were the extras that people just didn't have it, particularly as the budgets get tighter, weren't able to fund, like the basketball courts, or the improvements to fields, or just the mural that we did. Those aren't things that necessarily would get able to fund because of the demands that we have on our town budget.
I would just add to that, that those grants that Carolyn are talking about include the parks grant, the land grant, the historic preservation grants, or reimbursement grants, which means you have to lay out the full cost of the project and then submit the bills to the state in order to get reimbursed. If you don't have the cash to complete the project, you're not eligible for the grant. So, having CPA or other sources of cash in order to qualify for these grants that are, you know, fifty percent, sixty percent reimbursement is really important in trying to keep the costs down of these projects.
Bruce, do you have, I just want, Bruce, do you know what, you have an idea of what the total amount of grants the town has gotten as a result of that?
I don't have that number, no. It's in the millions, though.
Yeah, it's another substantial thing, because they look at, if I get it correctly, the state looks, do they want to know the town really cares? Are they gonna be willing to put the money up front to show they really want something? And I think that's where the CPA funding has been a tremendous asset.
Well, first of all, you know, I like free money, so getting two or three-hundred-thousand dollars here is nice. That's good. But I think what Josh said, I like to go a bit deeper than what Josh brought up. First of all, it's not a five-year override. It is because that's what we're asking for. But right now, the town has a structural, what I call the deficit. It brings in three and a half percent and spends four and a half percent. Now, in the past, that's been okay, because we've had things like meals tax, we've had the big building permits, we've had the room tax. So, that's made up this shortfall of spending around four to four and a half percent, and that's what we've done. And now, all of a sudden, we don't have those kind of things. Not that we might not get another one, but those things are kind of both words that have saved us over the course of, I would say, the last four years, probably. And now, all of a sudden, we're looking to say, we've got three and a half percent, which is basically two and a half plus new construction, and that's it. You get some other stuff, because your meals tax might go up a little bit, excise tax on cars might go up a little bit. But if they go down, we're really in trouble. The only thing you can depend on is that two and a half percent and some new construction. So, you have this one to one and a half percent deficit, which is about seven-hundred thousand dollars. And part of that is caused by the school not getting any money from the state other than ten, eleven million dollars. There's no two and a half in that. We have to fund that with Dunstable. That's about two-hundred thousand dollars that we gotta do. Dunstable's got another fifty on top of that, or seventy-five. So, we've got this big hole that all of a sudden, there's nothing coming in to fill it. So, we say, what can we do? Well, there's a lot of things you can do. You can hopefully get wages and benefits to be a bit less in town. You can look and say, well, is there anything that we could reduce? And that's probably the exercise that Mark's going through. And those are all things that are ugly. When you're talking about, the other stat that you should know is that seventy-five to eighty percent of the spending of Groton, Dunstable, and this town municipal government is wages and benefits. Seventy-five to eighty percent. So, where do you get savings? There's only one place you can get savings, really. You either reduce the wage and benefit increases you give to people, or you cut people. There is nothing in between. That's it. So, that's what we're facing. So, the answer becomes, how do you get revenue on the other side of the question? Because that's the easy stuff, maybe. And maybe it's not. I mean, CPA funds are tough. You get three, two or three-hundred thousand dollars of free money. That's hard to give away. But in fact, then you're gonna raise the tax rate by seven-hundred thousand, you get two-hundred free, you go, hmm, is that a good trade-off? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But none of the CPA funds go to the operational budget, which for the school is forty million dollars, and for the town is fifteen million dollars. If you take our share of all those, it's forty million dollars, us, Dunstable gets the other piece, but Groton-Dunstable. So, we've got a forty million dollar budget, and we've got a deficit of one and a half to two percent, and right off the bat, there's seven-hundred thousand dollars you gotta work with. So, this is not an easy decision. But you gotta, we have to consider CPA funds to say, because the good thing about, good, it is good, the CPA funds, if they go into the tax rate, in fact, they get two and a half percent. So, that helps. And if we can lower the spending rate to some number that kind of matches that, and we don't add a bunch of other things in town, which we're always gonna add stuff, you know, we need this, we need that, we need that. So, that's the issue we're facing. So, this is not an easy decision, but it is a big decision. And we need to put all the facts on the table, all the opportunities we have. And that's what we're gonna start doing this Saturday. And the school's working through their five-year plan, and they'll have their stuff later, but we put in an estimate for them because we had a good forecast from them before. It may not be right now, but it's gonna be close enough. And they'll work on their, what they're gonna work on. But we will know potentially what this means. And whether it's this year or next year, there's gonna be a problem. And so, we need to think how we get there from here. This is why CPA funds, as much as I hate giving away money, the other opposite side of that is taxing you to get the free money.
Right. It's a very cheery picture, Bud, thank you.
That's what FinCon members are for.
Becky, and then Marlena.
So, I was just going to make a comment about the five-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-dollar amount in the community housing bucket. I don't know if everybody in this room knows that we have asked, or we were required by the state, I think, to do the housing production plan, Mark?
Correct. We have to update it every five years.
Right. So, that is almost done, and we're expecting that to be completed and shared with us within the next couple of weeks. And speaking as, from the Affordable Housing Trust, we are waiting to see what that shows. Part of what they were, part of what the plan does is to identify any town-owned parcels that might be suitable for use for housing. So, we're wanting to see that. We're very much aware that there is that money there. And we recently attended a program that had some exciting, some examples of successful, exciting, affordable housing that had been created in other towns. It's a very complicated process. You don't always get what you set out. I mean, it doesn't all succeed that you get anything. You can lay out a lot of money, and then people, the developers find out, no, it's not feasible, it isn't gonna work. But there were some that did work. It's a complicated process. Who can get federal tax credits and state tax credits by the developers who will come in and do this. But I think there may be a possibility for us to tap into that money within the next year or so, I'm hoping.
Be good.
And the other part that I wanted to say is, I think that the CPA, another way that is different from the way that we raise and appropriate at town meeting, you know, by raising taxes from the property tax, is that the Community Preservation Committee is allowed to essentially keep money in the bank over a period of time in ways that we have less flexibility. We have to do an operating budget every year. We can't just accumulate large amounts in free cash and roll it over and over and keep it there. CPC can keep money, as witnessed the housing bucket. And it's like a bank that we put our money in. If we can afford to put our money into that bank, we get forty percent interest on it, which is terrific. Marlena?
So, I heard a couple of things here tonight, which sound promising. I actually do support the work of the CPA. I think that how the CPA has been working in previous years, there may be a slight different mindset, which I think I started hearing it actually from Bruce, in regards to, you know, we have capital plans. We have a district capital plan, and we have a municipal capital plan. And there are many things on those capital plans that are not maintenance. I can't even tell you how many complaints we get constantly about the school fields that need to be renovated, and the new Florence Roach Playground Fields, depending upon where we'll put that. There is a lot of work to be done, and it would be nice to get that match. But I think that I just want to bring to attention, I know Ms. Perkins had said, we weren't able to pay for everything since, you know, two thousand and four on that match. And one of those things was the high school track. But the reason why we weren't able to fund the high school track is because there wasn't any money left after the other priorities that were put before it. Now, I just wanna just call attention to it. It's not a matter that these other projects are not equally important. I'm just simply saying that they weren't on a capital plan for two years, and then an application went in and it was denied because there was no money left, while other applications came in and were never on a capital plan at all. They were great ideas, they were great projects, but they weren't pre-scheduled. And I think that there's something that with the criteria in which how projects are being reviewed, they're all qualified for CPA funds. It's just a matter of, we're running out of ways to prioritize our priorities. And that's getting very difficult. So, I think I just want to bring that to the attention of, maybe if it's on a capital plan, that should take priority over something that never even existed until it was a nice idea or something.
Josh?
I heard some comments, and folks, concerning how great the CPA is, and I agree. It's been really, really good. And then I've heard some arguments about how funding worked, and projects that got funded, and projects that didn't get funded. That's not what this discussion's about, okay? That's a discussion for somebody to take to the CPC and have that discussion as to why you would fund something and not fund something else. What we're here for is to talk about the issue of the tax, the surtax. Is it a three percent? Is it a two percent? Is it a one percent? Is it a zero? Okay? I wouldn't advocate for zero. But I think we need to, as we started out, or at least I started my explanation out, we need to be able to put this on the table. So, once we have all the other pieces that come forward from the budget meeting of Saturday and the subsequent meetings and the numbers, that we know that we can lay a plan out to the taxpayer, that if you do this and you keep that, here's what it's gonna cost you. And that's all it's for. So, I think that we really need to keep our eye on the prize here and not go commenting on the projects that you folks approve or don't.
I just want to say, I agree. I think it's good to keep everything on the table, because I think the town voted for this. I think the town, the voters need to know what they're getting for their money, what our goals are, what the long-range plans are. And I think it is critical to keep all this stuff out there, so people have it fully informed and know when they're making a decision, what the costs are and what the benefits are. Good point. Thank you.
Much of this talk sits under an umbrella called Wall Street and bond ratings. And as things are going right now, we may be getting near the middle of the road to thin ice in trying to keep our triple-A bond rating. And if we lose that, it's gonna cost us more in interest. In interest to borrow money. So, that's another piece, no scale, that we're juggling with.
Good question. So, what triggers, what triggers the triple from A, triple-A, what is it in our future?
They worry about reserves.
Reserves, okay.
Debt.
That's the main thing.
And a budget.
That's what can bring your debt rating down to AA or A whatever.
We posted, if you go to the town's website, we posted our latest bond rating review. Read it very carefully and look at the long-term outlook. That's the thing that scares me the most.
But to be clear, we did just get reviewed and we still have our triple-A.
Still triple-A.
Very happy about that.
Well, it's good to know. And I assume they rate it by year by year? Is that rating down on a periodic basis?
We got a two-year, we got a two-year approval that they're gonna maintain us at. But anytime you do a bonding project, they go through your town finances.
They review, sure. Do an analysis.
But they also reserve the right.
To come in any time.
In that letter.
Yes.
To come in any time in that two-year period.
And look at them.
And look at it.
Sure.
Correct.
So, it is truly a judgment act.
Yeah.
Of sorts.
I just have a question with regard to the affordable housing dollar amount that jumps out because it's so high. The state has a mandate or a criteria of how much of those CPA funds are allocated to those buckets, right?
Ten percent, correct.
Minimum of...
And then around ten percent.
They have, they have to be funded ten percent.
Right.
So, there have been no applications, and that's why this money is carried over, as Becky said.
Right, no.
The money's carried over.
Right.
But some of that money that's just sitting there, that's a problem.
In recent years, we've paid the salaries and benefits of the Affordable Housing Coordinator. In the recent years, we've paid the salaries and benefits for the Affordable Housing Coordinator.
Right.
And we've also done some site evaluation of Nashville Road. And I think we did some maintenance, not maintenance, upgrades to Pettipawag, Affordable Housing.
Septic system, right, we had, we had to get some pumps replaced.
But that's all money that we've already taken.
Right, this is spent, right.
Right, and it's sitting there.
It's sitting there, right, it's sitting there waiting for a good project. It's a challenge. We have the Sandy, so the housing.
But there's a cost of, for that money to be sitting there. It's already come out of pockets.
Right.
And it's still sitting there.
Yeah, it's still sitting there waiting for appropriate expenditure with a good project. You know, hopefully, it'll be, as Becky was saying, I think there's some good action, there's been some good results in other communities that have done team effort to get more affordable housing. You know, it's critical for us because we want that Forty-B.
I like the fact that money can sit there. I like, but if that much of it is sitting there, then we didn't need it at the town.
Well, I mean, I think that that's not exactly the right conclusion. I think it is, as I said before, it is very complicated to successfully build affordable housing, even if you have the money. And I think that the people who have been working on this over the years have made attempts. We ourselves made an attempt a year and a half ago to look at the country club. There have been projects, there was the Friendly Forty-B project on Townsend Road that, you know, we thought was gonna come along, and then it changed because ultimately, we can't always mandate how private developers and private landowners will actually end up deciding to use. So, the housing has been needed all along, and we've built up the funds. We should spend it, I agree. We shouldn't leave it there indefinitely. But I wouldn't, I would caution against saying, well, we raised money that we didn't need.
That begs a question, though. What if you don't ever get a project that comes in to apply for affordable housing or for the housing bucket? for affordable housing or for the housing bucket? And is there a mechanism to return that to unallocated? Is there a mechanism?
No.
No. We would, we would potentially pay the salaries and benefits of the Affordable Housing Coordinator until the bin was empty, should we decide to exit the CPA.
Let me ask you a question. Is there an opportunity to, no, this is probably a bad question, to petition the state for special legislation to reallocate those funds?
There have been many attempts at, let's say.
So I'm not the first one to come up with that?
Well, not just that.
I have a flair for the obvious.
Different proposals, but.
Well, the town of, the town of Groton in their municipal budget is looking at these sums in these bins. You can imagine what's going on at the state level when they're looking at the funds in the Community Preservation Trust Fund. There have been a number of attempts to, in the vernacular of the Community Preservation Coalition, raid the Community Preservation Trust Fund. To date, they've been unsuccessful. But I guess there will continue to be attempts to do that. And.
I'm saying to use it for other CPA projects. I'm not saying to use it for operating expenses.
Yeah. So that's the camel with nose under the tent, right?
Yeah.
Got you.
So.
It also, you always got this thing called precedent. You make one change.
Yeah, forget it.
And offset a, so they're very, I mean, there's a lot of communities very aware of that.
So I think we could continue to, if we decided to leave the CPA, we could, we could still fund projects, including the Affordable Housing Coordinator's salary and benefits, to over time, empty those bins, in which case the CPC could be dissolved.
Great. So this has been great conversation. I'm going to take another, yep, I'm going to take another comment from a committee member and then there are a couple of members of the public.
Well, I just wanted to talk about the Affordable Housing Bucket in that there are other ways. I mean, we've been waiting for the Groton Affordable Housing Trust to come up with ideas, but there is also the Affordable Housing Partnership and the Affordable Housing Authority that, you know, maybe the three of you should meet to discuss what other projects might be available, that the state might be able to fund, the way we did. I mean, I was on the committee that had the funding, that acquired the funding for the Pettipawag place and the HUD project. So there are, you know, those are the things that those committees should be looking for, funds that we could match and accommodate. So there are other mechanisms besides waiting for an application.
Thank you.
Paul Funch. I just don't want to repeat anything that's been said too much, but I do want to emphasize one point. And first I should say, I really have a lot of respect for the financial management at this town. Both the finance committee and our town manager and the board's decisions, I think, have really put us in a good spot, judged by the bond rating that we have and stuff. So I, you know, I really understand that. But, you know, I think CPA funds are, it's somewhat of, it's a different kind of animal. It's a bit of a quirky kind of set of funds. And it's not under town control as much. And I understand that makes a lot of town leaders unquiety or uncomfortable. But I think it can provide really interesting projects that come up ad hoc, not always planned, although I understand your concerns about, you know, having planned projects never get done. But, and one of the quirky things about the CPA funds is, was mentioned, but I really want to emphasize it, that it provides leverage for other grants. And there's very few sources of funding to the town like, or you just can't get free money like that. You know, I got a $27,000 grant, you know, and CPA paid $2,000 to help me get that. And to have the cost reimbursement is essential. So, you know, it does allow you to do things you can't otherwise do. So I think that's a really important point. And the other thing is, it is, as said before, free money to get the matching and to get as much matching as possible and to keep the number up as high as possible. So, anyway, thank you for the work you do.
And actually, it should be noted that the funds comes from the Registry of Deeds, so that Groton is actually contributing to that fund. So in some way, we're getting money back that we've already chipped in. So it's another thing to keep in mind as part of this whole balancing thing and the return on investment.
In other words, our money would go to other communities if we didn't take it back here.
Well, and Bruce actually read another question. Bruce raised a very interesting point at the last meeting. If Groton decided to drop to, say, two percent, what that does is it increases the size of the bucket for the people who hold on to the three percent. And the same thing true if other towns drop out. Groton's three percent generates greater revenue. So it's one of those things, you can see there's always these little trade-offs.
But one of the vectors that enters in there is, as the match goes up, other towns may jump in. So you could possibly have an expansion out to 351 cities and towns.
Yeah, the current.
Which would make a big difference in what was available.
The current history is that towns have been adopting it at the one percent level for a couple of reasons. One reason a lot of three percent towns got in is because the match was 100%. You could justify that pretty easy at town meeting. Today, typically, a one percent surcharge on adoption represents about a $50 surcharge on a typical real estate tax bill. And recent history shows that if you can keep that surcharge at somewhere around 50 bucks, the success at the ballot box in town meeting is a lot higher. But to get to Dan's point, eighty percent of the funds collected at the Registry of Deeds and transfers from the state surplus are distributed to all the towns. And twenty percent of that fund is distributed to only those towns who've adopted at three percent. It's basically an incentive for people to adopt at three percent. So strategically, you want to be the last town that's in at three percent, right? Because now you will get a hundred percent match, even though you might qualify for 500. The state law says the best will give you is a hundred percent match. So.
Do you have a breakdown of the 171 towns, what the percentage is at?
I don't have it with me, but I can give it to you.
I'd like to see that. I think that'd be interesting. When Boston got in, did they get in at one percent?
One percent, that's right.
All right.
And the CPA, God.
Just for anybody's.
Low one percent.
Yeah, go ahead.
So just for anybody's general notification, the CPA Coalition is a phenomenal website. They track every single expense by every single town. They provide all the data you could ever want. If you're a data hound boy, you can have a great fun at that. It's a great site.
Other than the housing coordinator's salary, is there any other way that towns use CPA money to pay the salaries of employees?
Good question.
I'm not aware of.
Well, I will tell you, Becky, when the CPA first started, when I first got here, their administrative assistant, who helps them, portion of their salary was paid out of the CPA funds. When I consolidated the land use and added additional duties to that position, they still helped the CPA, but the CPA doesn't contribute to that. They only have a five percent administrative bucket that they can spend anyway. It really wasn't a lot of money.
What about.
And I thought that money was better spent on projects.
If a town has a recreation department, could the recreation director's salary be paid?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that one either. Yeah. Something to look into. Again, the CPA Coalition, if you have any. They're, they are the place to go to because those guys work with the DOR. Just for anybody, the DOR is one of the gatekeepers. And actually, town council is the, turns out, is often the final arbitrator where their project meets, any given proposal meets the requirements. There have been several cases that have come up in the last few years that ended up, ended up in the local lawyer deciding, the local council deciding whether or not it met the criteria.
Interesting. So I'm going to go to Mary and then John, and then we'll wrap it up for tonight, but we will certainly have more conversations.
It's a good first discussion.
Really a question and an observation. You mentioned that there are projects that are coming in. There's a lot of stuff that's coming in, you know, water projects, et cetera. And we need something to soften the flow. Is the flow, the total amount of money coming at us is low to not have a two and a half override? I'm not clear. I do see between 2005 and 2019 that I don't believe Groton has had an override.
We haven't.
Is that true?
We asked, there were two votes and they were vote defeated.
And, but we haven't received overrides.
Correct.
Back in the olden days, I know, before CPA funds were around, I know as a public official, I've participated in three or four overrides. And I wonder if, and it probably is true, that CPA funds coming in in 2005 helped all towns throughout the state, including Groton, to not need overrides. We were certainly giving contracts that went beyond two and a half percent. Benefits were rising at two and a half percent for our town, our town employees and our other officials. Is that part of the factor here that CPA funds helped alleviate the need for overrides since 2005? And now are we now trying to keep original overrides on in the future? Those are two questions. I'd like to understand the relationship between overrides and our public, certainly Groton, not being used to overrides.
Right. So to me, and pardon me if I'm wrong, Mark, there are a number of things that we're looking at potentially that have been identified as needs, potentially priority needs for the next few years. You know, in my perspective in looking at it is, is kind of, what does a household have in their purse? You know, so they don't necessarily, I don't necessarily care when I pay my bills, whether it's my water bill, my CPA surcharge, my property tax, it's all coming out of the same bucket ultimately. You know, so we'll be looking at potentially a multimillion dollar ask for Florence Roach. That would be excluded debt. That would obviously increase the amount coming out of our pocketbooks. There's potential for an operating budget, either, you know, one idea that's been floated is a one-year authorization that would support override needs for several years. There could be smaller overrides. Ultimately, the water rate payers are looking at a significant bump for water treatment. Again, not a tax mechanism, but the same group of people that are being asked to fund all of these different things. So at this point, it's just, you know, kind of understanding what the options are. You know, what the mechanisms are. There are pros and cons to all of them. In an ideal world, everyone in our community could happily and readily write the check for all of them, but that's probably not realistic.
So it's not tied into one large override or one large tax bill to, at this point?
It's a collection of them.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
Can I interrupt before you go next to answer Becky's question? Don went onto the Coalition website. And housing is the only area where they say you could have support, meaning.
Sales.
Under open space, historic and recreation, it all says no.
Interesting. Okay.
To get, to get to Mary's question, a part of it, I think, Mary, I think CPA funds did somewhat allow us not to go for certain debt exclusions maybe, or just not do them. As an example, we probably wouldn't have done surrendering funds if we didn't have CPA, because we didn't have the money. We probably couldn't have got it unless someone wanted to spend a lot of money. And they probably already, I don't know if it would have got through. However, fixing the track out back at Flo Row and doing some other work on the church and doing all these other buildings that town owns part of them, Prescott, those may, library, those probably would have got done with an override or something. Some of them wouldn't have, but some of them may just have been done. The track may have never gotten done and would have just gotten worse and worse and worse. So I think CPA funds probably, you know, did help. Some of it wouldn't have got spent, my guess is, because I'm sure there were things that would have said, no, we don't have the money. We're not going to do it. But going forward, the money may be needed. We don't know yet. There might be other ways to find it. This is just an option to look at. That's all this is.
I'll waive my time to carry on.
I just want to make.
We want to hear you.
Is this the US Congress?
We want to hear you.
I just, I just want to say, you know, I think getting, either lowering or getting rid of CPA isn't a guarantee that the town will pass two and a half.
That's 100% true.
I just want to make that clear, that we're giving up a lot on the chance that the town will vote for a two and a half. And I think we have to consider that. I think we give up a lot to, I mean, I understand, you know, maybe a possible reduction. I kind of can see going to two percent because we're not getting surrendered funds. But we are going to lose a lot in terms of the quality of life in this town if we don't have the ability to fund the recreation needs, to put in the basketball courts and to do some of the other stuff, repair the library roof. I mean, there have been a lot of very good projects that have come out of this money. And even in terms of affordable housing, yes, we kind of hit a stumbling block with Boynton Meadows. Since no one else wants to mention it, I will. And that has, that has put people kind of back in terms of what they want to do. But there are a lot of ways to use that money. You can, you can buy down housing to make it affordable. You can buy down apartments. You can do a lot of things with this money that other towns have been successful that isn't as complicated as some. The Housing Authority can use the money to do that and has, has used it to help fund other projects. So just, let's just keep that in mind. I understand, I totally understand the problem and why, where you're coming from, but I also can see the other side of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, folks. One more. This is truly going to be it. Grab the mic if you please. It should be on.
So if I understand this correctly, the motivation is that you want to save the taxpayers' money by getting rid of some of this three percent surcharge. And your hope is that they will then vote for an override to replace some of that and go on a different part of the budget. So where's the logic here? You're taking away something which you're getting the state matched for replacing with something which is 100% Groton dollars. What am I missing here?
Well, you're missing the fact that the town has a deficit, potential deficit, and we're going to swap the money. They're already paying the taxes, so you're going to put it in an override. Yeah, because right now, let's assume it was only a 300, $5, $700,000 shortfall. Let's assume that's all, and it was all, could be fixed by flipping this money, which no one's proposing that. They would continue to pay the same amount of money in the police and the fire and things that would have to be cut potentially to make this work. That's the whole problem. What do we cut maybe in order to make the budget balance? Or maybe, how do we get some revenue in to make those cuts less? And that's all we're talking about. We're talking about taking cuts and say, let's not make cuts. Let's put revenue. So let's take CPA one percent, whatever the number is. And again, I'm not sure what the, it might be zero. We're not going to do anything. But it's an option to say, if we have a shortfall, if we want to cut 10 people out of town, police, fire, library, or they want to take money that we're already spending for CPA and say, let's take that piece of that money and let's put that into the tax rate to fund those other operations.
But that's a very expensive cut to make because you're taking it out of someplace where the state is giving us 25% on top of it.
I understand. We said that. I understand that. It's $200,000 of free money.
And so maybe they'll vote for the override.
Yeah, that's true. There's a big if. But this whole thing is an emphasis. Is this an option? That's what we're saying. Is this an option?
There's a finite amount of funds that taxpayers have, and we're trying to figure out how to survive in a municipality with a structural deficit to support the services, education, police, fire, highway, town hall. That's all this discussion is about. We're not trying to, you're not missing anything, Paula. It's just a debate, looking at all of the issues that the Select Board and the Finance Committee and my finance team are facing financially for the future of this town. A lot of issues. I'm sorry. I'll get off my soapbox.
And we will continue to look at them and have conversations. Very much appreciate the public coming, as well as CPC members.
Well, thank you on behalf of the CPC.
That was a good discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Come Saturday because you'll hear lots of stuff.
Yep.
And I would also add that if the decision is to go for an override, we will need everyone to help us educate the public about the need for that.
Right.
All right. So we have a few more items. So if I could just ask people to kind of file out somewhat quietly, that would be helpful.
So getting into the ongoing issues list, I already talked about the Prescott School project.
Wait, wait. We skipped a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Becky, I apologize. Is that in the packet?
What page are we on here?
Page 15 is the trust declaration.
Okay. So at a high level, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's currently a vacancy on the Affordable Housing.
There's a potential vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah, so the Affordable Housing Trust.
And should I return CPC when you invite her?
Very good. Thank you.
The Affordable Housing Trust met last week. This is a five-member committee. And, I don't know if committee is board. I'm not sure what the correct term is. According to the Declaration of Trust, all five members are created by the Select Board. Do we know if Josh is coming back?
He's down with the board of health, I don't know if he's coming back.
Okay. So, all five members are appointed by the Select Board. And the stipulation is that one of the five members must be a sitting member of the Board, of the Select Board, and that's me, right now. Sheila Julien, who's been on for some years, has stated that she will not, she does not want to be reappointed at the end of her term in June, and in fact, if a replacement was found earlier, she would step down. In the past, there was, for a while, there were two sitting members of the Board on this committee. So before the committee announces a vacancy and goes out publicly seeking recruits, it seemed like we, as our Board, should discuss if, if there was anybody else on our Board who wanted to sit on the Affordable Housing Trust.
The, the only requirement on this tenure of the trustees is that one of the trustees shall be a member of the Board. There's no requirement on the other four members. So if you want to have five members of the Select Board be the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right.
Well, you can only have nine total.
No, no, there's only, it's only five total.
No, you can add four more. I read it in here.
Oh, you could have, we, we have a five-member trust.
Yeah, but you could make it a seven or an eight.
You could, but we've decided to say five.
So it sounds like the question at this point is, is there another Select Board member who's interested in serving in this capacity on this?
Yes, because, because we just, and, and it's unfortunate that Josh is not here, because we just went through a situation somewhat similar, and I didn't think that we should go out and advertise unless we knew that no one else on this Board wanted to be on it.
I for one have to have a little bit of time to think on this, because tonight I've heard about a Housing Authority, some Housing Partnership, and the Trust Fund. And it's not clear to me how any of that is synchronized across those three organizations. Who's driving, who's the out-front leader for housing? I, I think it's, it's not clear. And we need to clear that up. We need to find a way to, to clear that up, so that we can get cohesiveness and get going in one direction. Because in the time I've been involved here, I've heard more talk about housing than, than I can imagine, but nothing happens. Very little happens. And that's why we have a big bankroll. So I think we have a, we have a challenge to figure out, how do we get the ball rolling in a, three people pushing the ball in a direction that they, is beneficial for all of them, and, and get some things to happen.
It is, I would agree with you that there's some, it's taken me a while to understand. The Housing Authority, I think manages, they have oversight over the existing affordable housing that we do have in Groton, and there is actually quite a bit, not as much as we should have, but there, but that's, I believe, their purview. The Affordable Housing Trust was created, the town voted to create that in 2010, and the idea was that it, it is a mechanism to accept private money in order to build affordable housing. Unfortunately, no one has donated any private money yet, but should someone wish to, that's the mechanism that it could happen.
So Mark, I'm thinking, it makes sense, and I'll get to you in a second, Anna, to potentially put this on the meeting agenda for next week. Maybe we can get a little bit of information in the interim as to how the different committees work and theoretically interact at least.
Who would I get that from?
The town manager.
You don't trust anything the town manager tells you.
And then potentially at that meeting, we can talk about whether Josh, you know, who's interested.
And if we aren't sure who to go to for this, it just reinforces the notion.
Well, we could ask, we could ask Fran.
You don't know where it's going.
We, we could ask Fran, and we could ask the Housing Authority themselves to come.
Yeah, why don't you ask for a meeting with all three of them to discuss this? You know, you're talking about them, you ask to have a meeting with them, together.
We'll find a way to wrestle with it, I'm sure we will.
So Mark, can you give us a summary for next week, and then maybe we'll set up a joint meeting?
So I'll give you a summary of what the, the three committees, the Housing Partnership, Housing Authority, Affordable Housing Trust, what their duties and responsibilities are. Put that before you, and then figure out, like Ms. Elliott said, bring everybody together for a meeting.
Yeah, and potentially too, I don't know whether we want to integrate it somehow with the, the Housing Production Plan.
Yep. Oh yeah, because that's going to be on the agenda too.
Do in another couple of weeks, so. A lot of moving pieces. All right, do we have any, excuse me, any updates on our ongoing list?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just making a note. So I already talked to you about the Prescott Sprinkle System Project, no change there. No update on the Water Department manganese issue. We still have not heard back from the state on the consent order. MS4 permit tomorrow night, the Stormwater Committee is holding a public hearing in this room at 7:30, Michelle?
7:30.
7:30 to talk about potential ways to fund the Stormwater Enterprise, well, Stormwater, either Revolver Fund, Enterprise Fund, whatever we're going to call it. They'll come back with a recommendation. I'm going to put them on the Select Board agenda, I think I said February 24th, to come before this Board to present their findings from the public hearing. Because they have, the public hearing starts on the 4th, continues on the 18th. Yes, Becky?
Do we have a sense of what the total cost of that?
About $250,000 a year is what we anticipate.
Per year, is that the estimate?
Is that correct, Michelle?
That is correct. We're working with Paul Bradford, and he has a spreadsheet that breaks down all of the costs that Groton has with the CPA, that they will be presented at the public hearing tomorrow night.
And by the way, it's going to be broadcast live on cable tomorrow night, and then rebroadcast. So please, anybody who can't be there tomorrow night, please watch it. This is very important. Josh brought that up tonight earlier with the discussion. This is another potential surcharge to pay for this service.
I think it's more than potential.
I was going to say, more than potential, it's mandated.
And what I'm saying is, $2.5 million indefinitely.
No.
Because this doesn't have an end. Did I know that?
$250,000. Please don't say $2.5 million.
A quarter of a million.
Thank you, thank you.
A quarter of a million, I'm sorry. A quarter of a million. But we're going to have to do that every year.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
And it's a state mandate, and, oh, federal, okay.
Federal mandate. The MS4 permit's a federal, the state enforces it.
Correct.
But it is a federal mandate.
But it is part of the clean water.
Yep. So anyway, please pay attention tomorrow night, it's a big deal. Paulie Stein, we contain that I have no update. Green Communities, Becky and I have talked a couple of times today. We have been accepted. We have not been officially told that we've been accepted. I tried to contact the state today, I have not heard back, but we are one of 31 new communities that got accepted into the Green Communities program. More information to come, but that's going to free up a lot of grant money for the town of Groton, which is exciting news. So congratulations to everybody that that happened. It's great news.
And we know, we know it's true, because it's on a map, that you can see online at the Green Communities Coalition, or whatever they're called, that shows us as one of the new communities this year. So we know that we have been accepted, it's just that we haven't seen the official proclamation.
Yes, and once I have that, we'll make a big, we'll do a big splash.
And, and the grant money, however, yes, there's a lot of grant money. We have also submitted a plan that was part of our application of how we're proposing to spend that. We have to go through and fine-tune and make those decisions.
Yep. So very excited about that. Yes, John?
Has anybody checked in to understand how the Green Communities is funded? I'm, I'm wondering if we're looking at a similar situation to CPC.
No.
Where when we add another 10, 20, 30 towns, we're...
No, it's absolutely not at risk like that. The money comes from the utility companies, and it's, it's, it's collected by the state, but it is not from state revenue. It's fees that are collected from utility companies. That was explained a couple of different times in the application process.
Be interesting to know if, if those companies have a long-term commitment, or a less than long-term commitment.
I think it's a requirement. I think it's a requirement.
I know I pay Green Communities charge on my electric bill, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hope for that to go away.
We appreciate that.
We don't do that here in town.
I'm sorry, you're right, you don't.
You need to be careful. You need to be careful.
I understand. So that's where we are with that. More news to come on that, but good news all around. Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, tomorrow, our PDP, and please tell me what PDP stands for.
Preliminary Design Phase?
Preliminary Design Phase.
Preliminary Design Plan?
Project?
Plan. Preliminary Design Plan. Tomorrow, there's a thousand-page document that our OPM and our architect will be delivering to the Mass School Building Assistance Board. It is a huge milestone in the project, once that goes in. We then have the next, and please, Marlena and Allison, correct me if anything I'm saying wrong here, we now have the next three months or so to take what we put in that plan and refine it to a project. Now, within that plan is an add renovation to the school to meet the, the education plan, and then there are two alternatives to construct new school buildings there. So we're going to be in the process of, the Florence Roach Building Committee is going to be working over the next couple of months to refine that plan. There's a lot of work that has to be done, and there is a subcommittee on the, on the Florence Roach Building Committee, led by Allison and Marlena, to get the word out to the public, to do a community outreach, because that is crucial in this project now moving forward. We are in the crucial aspects, and the, as I said to you last week, the community really needs to stop paying attention in getting involved in this project. Is there anything you'd like to add to what I just said?
Yes, actually, in the PDP, we're going to be dropping off a printed version at the Groton Library, the Groton Town Hall, the COA. There'll also be a link on the project website, you'll also see it in the Special Officers' priorities letter, you'll be able to see it in the Groton Council, particularly the School Committee newsletter. There's going to be a lot of implication, and Al and I, this is, we had a brilliant session, and our guys are coming up with a communication plan that's going to get rolled out, starting with a spread town meeting. And we have been sharing some information in regards to setting up things in the newsletter every month on the project, but really didn't have anything significant to share in regards to progress until we're in the PDP. I want to specifically mention in this document, when you look at the education plan that actually has brought quite a bit in regards to square foot and structure, as well as location, you'll see that we did narrow down, I know that there's a lot of highlights, I guess, possibly in the high school space, the parcel that has been ruled out, I'm not sure, I've got that out there ahead of time, but the PDP is PDP.
PDP.
It explains exactly all the work that went into the PDP.
Yep, good document. Thank you, Marlena, appreciate that.
John?
I, I always feel obligated every time this topic comes up to help, try and help people, especially in the audience, understand that when Mark says it's 50 million or it's 60 million, that isn't the total cost of the project. That's just the part that the town has to pick up.
Correct.
Okay? The MSBA, what is it?
MSBA.
MSBA only pays for what they want to pay for. They don't split the bill with you. They say, this is what we'll let you have, or this is, you know, it's sort of like going in, I heard it described before, you spend it, and then you go in and they decide whether they, they're going to pay for it or not. So it doesn't work like that.
We get reimbursed, yeah, we get reimbursed at 49% of eligible costs as determined by MSBA.
That's the kick, right there. So we're talking about what the town has to pay, the forecast, the predictions.
Becky?
Mark, you said it's in there to add or renovate to the existing Florence Roach.
Correct.
But you also then said, or two other school buildings?
Two, or two proposals to construct a new site, new building on the current middle school Florence Roach site.
What are the two, what's the difference between the two?
Well, one is behind the middle school, and one is behind the current Florence Roach school. We're trying to figure out how to do that.
But it would be the same building, essentially?
Well, actually, it's a different shaped building, depending on where it is on the site.
It would be for the same number of kids?
645 students, yes. 645? 645.
674.
Okay, so more to come on Florence Roach. Library roof repair project, I'm taking this off the list. It is done, completed, finalized, signed off, doesn't leak.
And we all get to.
That's good.
We're all invited to that meeting in the library on Friday morning.
Correct. That's right. Now, the project came in under budget, but there were some bills that were, that are still out there. So we're still going to bond the full amount that was approved at town meeting, because there are a couple of question marks. Eventually, whatever's left over, the Board and the town meeting can use to offset costs of other capital projects. So it's not going to be, it'll, the taxpayers will see that savings down the road, but that project is done. Great job by the trustees, great job by the contractor, and great job by our clerk of the works, OPM, on the project.
What is the downside to waiting to permanently bond until we understand?
Because we are going out to bond on Tuesday, and we need to permanently bond that, because otherwise we'd have to float the band for another.
Okay.
And we just went through that whole bond rating review, so we are going out to bond on next Tuesday.
Okay. And, and how much roughly is the delta in terms of what?
$50,000. It's not, it's not a large sum, Allison, but we can use it.
Yep.
As we did with the, with the senior center project to offset debt in the future. So the taxpayers will reap the benefit of that project coming in under budget. Highway garage renovations, they are moving into the building, they started moving, what, last Thursday, I believe, Dawn? So they are back into the regular building, and the main garage, the new garage, new facility for the, for the trucks is almost done. It's slated to be completed within two weeks, as I said last week. So next week it should be done. So that project is, is good, and I think we're going to come in under budget on that one as well, which, which is good news. So all around, our capital projects are going very, very well, and I'm very happy with the outcome.
Very good.
And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any liaison reports?
I will just mention that the nonprofit council did meet last Friday, it was a well-attended meeting.
Great. Marlena had her hand up there, so. We're going to get you a permanent microphone.
I just wanted to give an update, so February 10th, we're going to have the grand school budget. You have the second meeting in November, and then you have your meeting as well. We'll do another one, we'll do it the second time, much better. February 26th, we're going to do an executive session before here at 6:30 at the library and the high school. The executive session, we will, we'll descend on a formalization to our peer boards, both towns. The executive session will discuss our contract negotiations, we would like to give an update and the progress to that, of the progress there. And also, some, to get more details regarding special education drivers, so we can protect the privacy of our student. So that way, when we do go into the public session for the public hearing, you'll be able to understand the numbers a little bit more in depth, without compromising students' public records. Core negotiations, that's that.
Good, thank you. Any other reports? All right, then we have one set of minutes from January 27th, regular meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or changes?
You have to have a landfill up there for the meeting.